We are live.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 26, 2022 Board of Zoning -- meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for Hyde Park. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to take the chairperson's prerogative, and we are -- Mr. Cooper, you're here. Would you come up? We're going to move Mr. Cooper's request to the head of the line here. I think we'll be able to deal with that. Mr. Cooper, can you sort of describe your --
Make a motion to move --
Thank you. We need a motion to --
Mr. Cooper, to the beginning of the agenda.
All right.
Thank you.
There's been a motion to move this to the first part of the agenda. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now you're legal. Okay. We need to -- hold on just a minute. We have a -- we need a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, finally, Mr. Cooper, can you explain your situation and what your request is for?
Yes, sir. Do I need to speak in the mic?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Wait, but there's a hand mic there. Is there a hand mic?
Yes.
Why don't you talk in that? I think it's --
Okay. All right. Sorry. So, to give an explanation --
Hold it up close.
In order to explain the situation, I have a -- we bought a property seven years ago, some time ago, seven, eight years ago. There was a set of stairs that had been put on it that were concrete and really no reinforcement underneath it. They were starting to fall apart. The handrail that was put up on the house was put up in order to meet the code so that I could purchase the property by the previous owner. And we finally decided to go ahead and take that staircase down and put up a deck on the front that would allow us to actually utilize that front area in a manner that was, you know, more conducive to enjoying the pond in front and seeing cranes and stuff like that fly in. So, we contracted a contractor, a gentleman, I don't remember his name off the top of my head right now, but his company has nailed it right. We ran through a couple of estimates. He brought the information here to the town, showed the drawings to the building inspector. Building inspector gave preliminary approval on the drawings. He'd asked a couple of questions for clarification. We provide -- we gave those to him. The building inspector told us we need to move the request over to zoning. We did. The contractor said he was in some sort of a time crunch because he was going on a honeymoon or something like that and wanted to get the work done. So, he requested that we could start the demo. The building inspector gave us an approval to do so because he didn't really know that the property had the pond in the front. I don't know how that happened. I wasn't really part of that process. So, the contractor came back with the approval, started demoing my stairs. About that time, I got a call from the zoning board saying you need a variance for the pond, the wetland. So, I got ahold of the contractor. He came to the town, got the paperwork, came back, handed me the paperwork. I filled it out, gave it back to him. He -- at this point, I don't have stairs, and he was told that you couldn't do any demo or build, but we already didn't have stairs now. So, we contacted the building inspector who recognized the problem, talked with somebody in the zoning board. He came out to the site, inspected what was already gone, said, "Okay, this is what I want you to do. Pour your footers or your sonotube footers. Get the thing framed up and get it ready," because he thought it was just a formality about getting it done. I'm not trying to throw him under the bus, by the way. It's just what -- the way it went down. So, at that point, contractor starts getting the materials, does what he does, frames it. The building inspector came out, did another look at it. I'm under the impression at this point that we're already in the process of getting a variance. I had the contractor do as much work as he could get done. He finished the deck. I guess you could call it finished. He did about 80% of the work, and then he disappeared on me, so I haven't heard from him ever since. I didn't know if the permit had been closed out, because since he kind of disappeared on me, I came to the town hall and said, "I'd like to get this process resolved," and I don't know where we're at in it. And that's when Serena told me that I never had a variance applied for. At this point, I already have a deck. I had to finish the last 20% of the work myself because, like I said, this individual disappeared. That was also part of why I was coming, so that if you guys were getting other permits from this gentleman, that you would maybe consider not giving them to him because he's not reliable. But then, at that point, I submitted the variance, and she helped me with the paperwork. I took photos, showed you this is what the deck looks like. I took measurements. I had previous measurements of the old stairs, so I knew that the existing deck actually was, I want to say 12 or 16 inches or something like that, closer to the house, you know. So, basically, it was actually closer or farther away from the pond than it was originally, but I had a lot more deck area now to utilize. So, that's essentially how it happened. I submitted everything I was supposed to submit at that point and waited for your date, and now I'm here.
Okay. All right. Questions from anybody?
No.
Just one. Your pond empties, what, into the Falk Hill somehow?
Yes, sir. So, it runs south along --
Beck?
Beck Road. And then, I don't know where it goes once it gets to the end of Beck Road, but there's a kind of a gorge on the side.
Yeah. Falk Hill runs right along there.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
I went out to look because they've had a couple of problems with, when we had torrential downforce, they -- the road got washed right out.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah. Have you had any flooding problems from that?
I have not. My neighbor, though, has had saturation in his yard where he can't mow because of the difficulty with the drainage.
Okay. I look, having not to mow, that'd be good.
Well, he complains about it, and I try to help him, you know, get a good flow going in the springtime.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Any other -- is there -- do we have anybody from the public? Ms. Moss, any questions? Counsel, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe if there are no other questions, in a motion, do close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We -- I believe we have a resolution for this. Jerry, would you be so kind -- Mr. Bowen, would you be so kind to read that, please?
Resolution to grant area variance, Samuel and Stephanie Cooper, 44 Beck Road, January 26, 2022. Resolution number 21-20Z. Whereas the applicants, Samuel and Stephanie Cooper, have submitted an application for an area variance for a stream corridor incursion toward a water body within the Fall Creek -- Fall Kill Creek watershed from 100 to 33 feet to replace a wooden deck on a house already within the stream corridor, the project, located at 44 Beck Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, 12601, identified as tax parcel number 6263-01-191910 in the Greenbelt Zoning District. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267-B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law Section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The requested variance conforms to the character of nearby properties. Many of the houses in this area encroach into the stream corridor and have decks leading to their front door. As this previous deck replaces older concrete steps, it will be a visual improvement to the house, and it decreases the chance of negative impacts to the water body via stormwater runoff. Number two, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The existing house is already within the 100-foot stream pond corridor. This deck provides access to the front door. Without a variance for a structure here, the applicants would not be able to use the door. Number three, the requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant has requested a stream corridor incursion of 33 feet, which is encroaching 77 feet into the setback. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The old steps were built of impervious concrete, therefore increasing stormwater runoff into the pond. And those steps have been replaced with the pervious deck. This change will benefit the environment. Number five, the difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Number one, payment of all fees.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait. Madam Secretary, would you call?
James Agarwal?
Yes.
Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly?
Yes.
Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Cooper. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I appreciate it. I have one question. I was hoping -- I forgot to ask. We're considering replacing the existing deck in the backyard, so behind the house, which is still within the 100. So, now that I have a variance, am I going to have to reapply for another variance if I do it within a year?
Is it on the same footprint? With the existing deck? Are you replacing it or repairing it, or are you extending it?
I would be extending it. It would be --
Is it still within 100 feet?
Yes. It would be actually even -- because right now, if you took a look, well, if I --
You don't have to come back.
It's about 70 feet to the lead edge of the deck on the back of the house, and I do have to get another variance for the back deck?
Yeah. Put the drawing together and show it to me, and I believe so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
I'm not saying we look forward to seeing you again, but if we do, we'll understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Camp Victory Lake. We are -- let's see. I need a -- I need a motion to continue a public hearing.
Motion.
Camp Victory Lake.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Hey, everyone.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys all again. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I feel like it's still a little too far out, but I'm still going to say it.
No, you're good. You're good. The -- okay. As we have talked before, we had several questions in terms of the height, which I think have been addressed, and the location of the building to enable fire vehicles to access the east side of the building, which I think has been addressed. Then the other question is the 100-foot corridor, and it's not -- you're asking for a variance to go to zero, and that's not the issue as much as the issue of the buildings that you're moving to accommodate additional parking. And you're moving them toward the lake across the road, to the north of the road. And we had questions about, is there any other configuration of those buildings? Is there any type of consolidation of those buildings on that site? You addressed before that you could not move them significantly to the south of the property, on the property. But I think that's where we are at this point.
Right. I concur. So, just to kind of give you guys a little background, so again, the height variance, it would be for 12 and 1/2 feet. That's for the structure. And then, the stream crossing is down to zero, and that's because of the stream crossing right here. We approve right up to it. So, I prepared a couple of items to kind of work our way through. So, the first one being this exhibit.
Right.
So, this, again, highlights the changes that we made after talking with the fire department. As you can see, we kind of went right up to the road. It was about 52 and 1/2 feet away, so we moved it back, moved the building up a little bit, put a fire access lane, and put enough space in there so that the swing arm could hit the other side of the building. So, that's what we did to that.
That would not hit the building.
So, yeah, so it would not hit the building, but could cover it.
Okay.
And so, then I prepared two more exhibits just to kind of highlight what's going on. So, if you guys take a look at the photo one.
Yeah.
So, this is the site plan overlaid over an existing conditions aerial, and that was just taken in 2021, so pretty up-to-date stuff. So, I just wanted to highlight all of the other kind of intrusions into that area.
Right.
So, we have decks -- we have docks that are in there. You can see some amphitheater space, and that's kind of a little blurry, but it's going right where one of the cabins is, so it's actually closer to the stream. We also have an area which, if that -- you see that large open field? The reason it was mowed and kind of flat like that was there was this old --
Where are you now on the field?
Sorry. Where the northern parking lot is.
Oh.
Right in here.
Yes.
So, that area was graded. It was mowed. It was disturbed. And then, they used an old temporary air dome structure that they had out there. So, again, I just wanted to use this to highlight just all of the disturbance that really did occur in this area, and then to kind of say how we're improving it. So, part of it was the stormwater features that we're proposing. So, they run along here, here, here. So, that's collecting all stormwater runoff from all the new development.
Right.
Other than the cabins. The cabins are getting a separate treatment system, and those are going to be infiltration drywells. So, the roof leaders will be connected to that infiltration practice, and so any rain that hits the roof goes down the roof leaders into the drywells.
Okay.
So, the idea is so that that water will not be directly flowing down the hill and into the stream. It'll be going into the ground, and then from there, back into the aquifer.
Okay.
And just to point out that that actually -- so, that's not occurring currently. So, all the new development gets stormwater treatment. One of the things -- because I really want the camp to have that visual over the lake for these cabins. So, one of the things I was thinking about doing, if you take a look at the landscaping plan, is to create a no-mow buffer. And the idea behind that is that that will allow the grasses to kind of grow all the existing native vegetation, to kind of take back that area, creating that habitat that aquatic and mammalian species like to use. So, and then what we are also proposing is a -- sorry, National Wildlife Federation Garden. And that's just a very simple certification for your garden. But what it does is it shows that you're creating a habitat that's actually used by species.
Right.
Rather than some sort of decorative garden. This has to have food, so the plantings have berries and nuts. So, we're really trying to recreate that habitat that would otherwise be in just grass fields.
Right.
So, that's really what we're trying to do, is offer an improvement for that area in kind of what the nature of that buffer is for.
That's good. That's good. Questions, gentlemen?
I have a couple. So, I understand we're moving into it. What is the -- and in other words, we have a 100-foot buffer, and there's a reason for that, right? Have we made that clear? Have we, like, said, "This is why we had a buffer, and this is what we're doing to mitigate"? In other words, what is the buffer for? Because I think it's for not just plants and animals, but for groundwater and all the things that happen naturally that slows down some of the rainwater so that it doesn't flood downstream. I mean, there's a lot of things that are involved. So, it's kind of a serious thing when you're -- we put it into zoning, right? That we've got a 100-foot buffer, and now we're giving it up, because you weren't in the 100-foot buffer as far as I can see with any buildings prior.
Mm-hmm.
But now you're going into that buffer.
Correct.
The -- I think, and Ms. Moss, you may comment on this, too. I think the primary purpose of the 100-foot is for wildlife.
Yep.
To have --
My phone is closed.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is for wildlife habitat to come through. Is that correct?
I believe the code talks about movement of wildlife.
Right.
Along the stream corridor.
So, that's the primary purpose of the 100-foot.
And if you don't mind me interjecting, just to kind of refresh the board's memory.
Yeah.
So, the building was initially proposed for the north side of the site.
Right.
And so, if it was still proposed up there, the cabins would stay exactly where they are. But because we moved that structure out of that area to kind of preserve potential habitat, that's kind of what led us into this situation. So, again, the whole north side of the stream will not be touched.
Right.
And that will also preserve that kind of --
Have you been to the campground in Stattsburg? Margaret Lewis?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Nori Point, yes.
Which one is it?
Nori Point. It's in Stattsburg.
Nori Point?
They have a very similar thing as far as the size of the cabins, and they're very close together. But I would say that any animal could walk through that campground and not know that there were cabins there. I mean, they could be tree trunks or anything else, because it's not mowed. There's tree cover. I mean, that's really the key, is the -- there's a limited amount of automobile traffic or any of that. So, that's really, to me, more the key. And what I'm getting at is, I'm still curious why we couldn't put those real close.
Because this was earlier on, the decision was made because of turtles and other things, that this area could not be invaded.
I'm saying, do we approach that decision and say, "What is this compromise we're making? Can we make both sides of the stream better by just making -- moving them to this side and not having them on this side?" I don't know. It's something that the 100-foot buffer seems to me something that should be, well, a religious movement. It should be there.
No. I, as someone who -- I kayak. I love streams. Like, it's probably my favorite place to be is out on the river. So, I really do appreciate the waterways. It's not -- but just so many limiting factors, and we're trying to offer an improvement. And I would happily accept any other comments. If you want to see more plantings in that area, I would absolutely be happy.
I'm just saying that they could go outside 100-foot buffer on the other side very easily.
No. No, they could not. No. A decision was made not to invade that and build on this side.
So, you're saying that this is protected forever?
That's correct.
Yep. We are offering a conservation area in that part of the parcel.
Oh, so we have a conservation easement for that at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's located on the master plan and designated as such.
Okay. Okay. I like that.
Okay. Other questions on this?
And can you tell me how many acres that is?
Off the cuff, I can't. I can search through my records, see if I can pull it up real quick.
It's all working.
Stop. All right.
Can you hold me a moment? This is right.
I believe it's somewhere at least about 20 or so, but let me --
Please.
Sorry. Bear with me.
No, it's right.
No problem. Give me papers with this project. This is, believe it or not, my condensed file on this.
Ah, I believe it.
I believe it, too.
I don't have a calculator. What's 371,000 square feet divided by 23?
Divided by 40 is about seven acres.
Yeah. Okay.
43,560.
43,560? I don't remember.
Yeah. 4,300.
Yeah, I got it. I have it.
Yeah. No, that's all right. That's all right. It's close enough. That's seven acres.
Seven.
Seven-plus acres.
Really? 200.
So, that's a good -- that's a good --
So, that leaves about 90 acres. What else have we got to do?
For the rest of them, I'm looking at the master plan. Do we kind of stay away from any really intensive uses in the northern end of the site? Trying to stick with that archery, camping, hiking trails?
Aren't those camping?
Which ones?
Those buildings. Aren't those camping?
Yeah, on the south -- on the south side. He's talking about the north side.
So, why not put them in that area that you're talking about?
No. This is restricted.
No, it's not restricted. He's talking about putting camping right there.
We're talking about on the north side of the stream. The idea is that this kind of thing is would stay as limited as impervious surface as possible. And the other kind of issue is that is to move these structures across the stream.
Might as well rebuild them.
Yeah. At that point, it's just --
On that improved road that you plan to take all those buses across, it'll be a piece of cake.
No. Peter, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
In terms of when you relocate the cabins, are they going to be on -- what are they going to be on?
Stilt.
Stilt.
I'll put them up here, so it's --
Piece of cake.
So, there's your piers.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I hang out on the Outer Banks a lot, and they move houses down there like it's going out of style. They pick them up, move them 50 miles, 60 miles, and put them down again.
Okay. But according to what you had suggested, if these are on piers, that would be fine. That's what he's talking about. They're going to be on.
Oh, on piers here?
Yes.
Yeah, that is good, but outside this --
Can't go there.
Outside this seven acres. You're putting a campground. Correct.
For tents.
And that's a future phase. So, that will then go through a whole different level of site plan review to get that.
Right. Well, again, go take a look at Stattsburg's campground. They have one area where they have some buildings, and then they have the tents. So, the whole camping area is in one spot.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Take a look.
Are there -- this is good. Are there any questions? Any other questions?
No. Very clear.
Okay.
I had one more.
Because -- You have one more? Okay.
We've talked about the height of the building and how we come to this approximate height that's not really the height. It's adjusted height.
The average.
Average.
Along all sides.
I would like, if anybody here knows, and this week, later this week, wants to go over it with me, that would be fine. But I would like to know if it's an average, or is it just points that we pick? How is that really determined?
Well, I need to demonstrate. So, basically, what we had done is we took the proposed grade around the sides of the structure, up, up, and down.
You want to bring that up closer?
Yeah. So, what happens is each side of the structure gets a review. So, we have this based off the contours that we generated for the site.
Could you turn the microphone around?
Oh, yeah.
Here.
There.
Here.
Awesome. Thank you. So, the -- So, the idea is that all the proposed contours align with this image. So, this is what the site's currently proposed. So, the way you get the average height is you take what the grade is along each of the four sides of the structure, and then you take that average by the length. So, then, this average --
So, the 250 feet or the -- what was the other dimension on the north-south dimensions?
Oh, I believe it was 160 or so.
Okay. So, that's right.
So, you're taking the horizontal as well as the vertical?
Yes.
Per side?
Yes. So, you're getting the average grade here.
Okay.
And so, then you're --
So, they each one -- or two of them should be about the same, and two of them should be the same. In other words, they should be -- they should almost match as far as the length of the building. Have you got a --
The front and the back. The east and the west are going to be about the same.
Yeah.
The north and the south are going to be about the same.
All right. Tell me, tell me what they are. That's all. I guess that's the way it would look, west, east.
Yeah. So, this one is, if you're facing the structure from the parking lot.
Right.
This is along --
Crumelo.
Not Crumelo.
No.
North Quaker.
Quaker.
This one is along North Quaker looking up, and then this one is along -- no, no, sorry. This one's North Quaker looking south.
Okay.
And then, this one is at, like, -- And then this one is at like the intersection along Cromellow looking north.
Okay, go back to your averaging of heights now.
Yeah.
Just take one and.
So what you do is you take the average grade divided by, and you take that grade, and then what you do is you get that average height. So say, here's our, our elevation, 313, that's the entrance. So then you get this span all along the cross and you divide it by the length. All right, and so then you take that and you factor it for all the sides.
Would you tell me the numbers?
No, just, just, just walk through.
I'd like to work it out so that I understand this the next time we do it.
Right, so if you take the length, unless, what's the, on the top one, just, just look at the top one.
Yeah.
The length is.
So the length we have here is 253 feet.
Okay.
At elevation 302, 307, and 313. So that is where you're getting all these corners. So that's, trying to get the low points.
Actually, I, I think this map is big enough where I can almost see it. 14 feet is at 302, 33 feet is at 307.
Yes, yes.
206 feet is at, okay, can I have that map?
You have to.
You have.
That big?
Yeah, yes.
It's, it was.
You have that, you have that in your, in your.
All right, I would just like to get those numbers and, and take a look at it. Because what you're doing is you're going to then measure from how many points up to get the height.
So the way that it works is that you take the average of that and you take the midpoint of that point. So that is.
Okay.
307.35, because if this entrance is at 313, and then.
No, I've, I've got the bottom part, but now to get to the top part, there, there's different heights, right? So are you measuring different heights as you go along or are you just measuring the tallest?
Tallest part. So it's the midpoint of the, the highest roof. So we'll get it from the average grade.
I'll go again, why is it the midpoint and not the peak?
That is the peak. So if, Peter, if the average height, and now you're above sea level on this, right?
Yes.
So your average sea level height of that building, you take an average, you take three points and you measure them and you take an average.
Yes.
Then from that point, you measure the tallest port of the part, part of the building. And that's, that's the height.
They don't measure.
No, they do.
Yeah, no.
Yes, they do.
It's the highest point by zoning, is that? So the highest point is, for zoning, is the midpoint of the eve of the tallest roof, correct? So then you would take that height, the midpoint, and the bottom, or, and you would measure that from the midpoint of.
The average.
The average of the structure.
So if the roof was all one piece, it would actually be shorter, even though it was the same height, because you go to the middle of the, the roof line. So the first roof line.
Wait, 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 the midpoint of the roof.
So if we peaked it like this, right, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
You would get the midpoint around here.
Yes.
So it would end up being shorter. But the, the reason the architects did it this way is to create that volume. Because the idea is that if this is going to be an auditorium space, and there's going to be seating in here, if you, you're just like crunched, crouched down and low ceilings, it doesn't really give it that feel. So this gives it some volume. The old building that we actually had was even taller than this, but actually had a lower height from, if you read the rules. And again, this is interpretation.
I'm learning, I appreciate this.
Yeah.
See, now I'm looking at the height here, this has got to be 20 feet, right? And what is the midpoint on that?
So I, so actually, if you want, this is probably the best measurement. So if you're looking at the lowest side of the structure.
From the seats in the, in the auditorium or whatever, how high is it, is it down?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't answer that right, right off now, because I'd have to get.
That's another internal question, we're really talking about the height of the building here.
So if you want, the overall height would be 63 feet, three and a half inches. And that's without any sort of kind of working the measurement to gain the averages.
That's from the ground up.
And that's from the lowest point of the structure to the absolute tallest.
Okay.
So it's at least three times higher than this right here.
No.
Yeah, I would say that's, that's probably about right. But again, this, this is also part of the structure that's going to be buried. So from the views, you don't really see it from the road, and that's kind of highlighting that vision.
I would say.
For, I like that, retained.
Yeah, buried sounds deep.
It's pretty deep, it's like 12 feet, it's not that bad.
Okay, so on each, each angle, each east-west, north-south, you take an average.
Yes.
You put those together then for the, for the variance that you're asking for?
Yeah, so that's actually that calculated 307.35 feet. So that's the, that's the bottom point that we're taking from.
Okay.
And then the midpoint up here is that final distance. So between there, it's 47 and a half feet.
Okay, all right. And we're going from, you're asking for a variance from up?
35 feet to 47 and a half.
Okay.
So 12 and a half feet.
Okay.
But show them this, this second one, because that's really where the height is. You, you, that dark line that's across the doors, is that doors or is those windows?
Uh, yeah, this is going to be some sort of facade that the architects are working out. So, but yeah, this is your average height that we're getting from.
That's what we're calling the average.
That's the average height of, of the.
So we got the average height and then we're taking the mid of the top roof.
Right.
So.
That's how they do it.
I wish I could pay for things that way.
Me too.
Okay. Questions from anybody?
None.
Thank you.
We'll explain, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, thank you very much, that's good.
I can do a little better next time.
If, if you wouldn't mind, I would just like those numbers from the bottom.
Sure, you've got.
I have that.
You have that?
Yeah, you've got a copy.
I'll take that.
I will send it again tomorrow.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry?
I'll print it out for you nice and big.
All right.
I think Rich wants to look at the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
That would be fine. Okay, are there any other questions here? We're in public hearing, is there anybody from the public? No comments, okay. Now, you know that we have, we're going to need to continue this because we need to get, what?
We are waiting for the planning board to finish seeker.
Right. And so we're, I'm hoping to have that squared away next meeting, because my goal is to get a. Submission in next week to show up for the planning board, and then I'll show up again with you guys.
Okay, so my question to, to, to the board tonight is, have we answered all the questions that we need to for the variances that he's requested?
Almost.
Almost, okay. You're going to study, okay, all right, okay, that's fair. All right, then, I need a motion to continue the public hearing until February 23rd, 2022. Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing until February 23rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, opposed? Okay, good.
Anything you want from me, because if I'm, I'm going to be doing this big submission, I would love to be able to provide you any thing you guys need to, to kind of help with your decision.
You, you need anything, you're going to look at the numbers.
I'll, I'll look again.
Okay.
Okay.
I did have a bunch of stuff, but I've taken that one in tonight. So I'll go over it myself and I'll sort out what we.
Perfect, and feel free to email me as well.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We'll let you do that. And the next item on the agenda is Rite Aid Pharmacy. And. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Both.
Second? Is there a second to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, good evening.
Good evening.
This one's on, right, there we go. I'm Nancy Forrest, I am with Gloody Signs, GNS Group, representing for Rite Aid. Sorry I missed you last month.
Do you have a hand mic there, is there one? Is it, is it, is it on? Yeah.
Is it?
Just tap, tap the top one.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Peter.
I guess it is.
Yeah.
Then I can move this, I don't need this, right?
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
Sorry I missed you last month, I was out sick and this, I'm hoping we can get resolved. It's been kind of ongoing and it's a very confusing thing. We are, we are the company that is applying for the permits and the variance, and we will be doing the installation. We are not the company who's been going back and forth with all of these drawings and designs.
Okay.
So it's been a little challenging, it wasn't like I could take them back to my office and have them redone. We had to go through this other company.
Right, now, I think one of our confusions is really to understand each of the variances that you're asking for and the change in the size, et cetera. I think, I think we're pretty well along other than the, the two sides that are going on the building.
Oh, okay.
If, if, if I understand correctly, you have two wall-mounted signs, uh, those, those we're going to come back to, those, those over the entrance and on the side.
Right.
But you have two freestanding monument signs, which I think you have come back into compliance with in terms of height? Is that?
Of the signs themselves, not the overall decorative structure. Because they wanted to use the structures that were there prior to the.
Signs.
Yes.
Okay, and then you have safety signs to be larger square footage of the surface area.
Correct, two square feet to four.
Uh, and are there others?
Um, in addition with the monument signs, there are two signs, monument signs, and now the code calls for one. So on the monument signs, the two variances we're looking for is to have two of them instead of the one.
You have two now.
Right, but your new code only allows for one.
Can I?
So not to keep the second one.
So right now, what the building has doesn't meet code because it was there before the code?
Correct.
So, so everything that's existing may not be.
Right.
Right, so even though it's there, you've got to ask for it again, kind of like.
Oh, I understand.
Kind of like the porch.
Trust me, I've been doing this 43 years, I, I, I understand.
The porch that, that just came in and we gave them the porch.
Okay, all right. Do you want to run through them?
Um, if I could.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the monument signs, there are two on the property now that exist. They, we, so we're asking for two monument signs where only one is allowed. They are, right now, if they're allowed to stay, the backgrounds, the signs on them meet code as far as letter height and everything else. What doesn't meet code on those two are the poles and the decorative elements, which you have drawings there. You know, they're the little pointed roofie things. So those are the two variances we're looking for on those, to have two instead of one and allow the backgrounds to stay.
So you're looking for a variance to add another monument sign?
No.
No?
No?
Well, basically, yeah, it's there. If you don't give us the variance, we have to tear one of them down and decide which one it'll be.
Need a variance to allow the second monument sign to stay.
Correct.
And at this point, within that, are, are we giving a variance on the size of the lettering or we're okay?
No, the monument signs, the lettering, everything conforms.
Is the actual size of the sign?
The height of the sign is the issue.
Okay.
There's supposed to be seven foot to the top of poles or any decorative elements, and these are 11. Or it's supposed to be eight foot, these are 11. So it's a three-foot variance in the height of the decorative elements and allowing a second sign on the property.
Okay.
And that was put there originally because it is a corner property.
Okay, nothing on the lettering on those two monument signs?
Requires any variance, no.
Okay, good, all right, we understand that. Good, why don't we hit the safety signs, that sounds like an easy one.
Those are the little freestanding signs, I believe you have the pictures of those.
Yes. They're all over. You've got a number of those, if I.
Um.
On the driveway, you've got one on the.
Three, I think, aren't there?
Free.
Three freestanding ones?
Yes. Okay. All right.
And they designed those according to the ones that are there now, is what they had done. And again, you have reduced in the new ordinance the sizes of them. So this company, you know, surveyed what was there and then came back at it. So yes, these are larger as well.
So they are existing and we want to make them larger. Do we have a sense of how much larger?
Uh, we have, oops, sorry. You, you allow two square feet, we're looking for them to be four square feet, which is the size they currently are.
Okay.
And those are within the property.
Right.
You know, like to see where to go for the drive-through.
Okay, good.
So.
If I had to lose one, I would like to lose these.
I'm pretty familiar with your signs, because before we gave the gas station across the street approval for their signs, I went out, measured yours and made sure that they were, their signs were smaller. Because I thought yours were legal. So I made an error in doing that.
Okay.
So I voted for, I've got to take my boot back.
I'm not sure which one.
So you're looking basically to double the square footage, what's the dimension of that? Do you know?
I can find that pretty quick.
I believe it's just four square feet.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, but he wants.
I want the, yeah, yeah, I want, because it makes a big difference.
Oh, I don't have larger drawings, is that what you're looking for?
No, no, the length and the height of the new signs versus the old signs.
It's one feet, four inches by three feet.
Say it again, please.
One feet, four inches tall by three feet wide.
That's the new or the old?
Both.
Both.
Again, your ordinance changed and you.
The old is not legal, what they have.
Okay.
So, and they're changing them. They're changing the color, they're taking them, taking the face off, putting a new face on, so it has to comply.
Okay.
Existing and, and those are just the same signs.
Right, same signs, but the size is different.
No, the size is the same.
Your code is different now, your code's saying they can only be two square feet.
It's not normally compliant.
Okay, so the only reason they're not compliant is that the code changed.
Yes.
Correct.
But we're keeping the same size of the, of the sign. Looks like you're changing the font a little bit, but other than that, that's, that's the difference.
Yes.
Color and font.
Color and font, okay, all right. Everybody, is there?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, other than the wall-mounted signs, are there other signs? I think that's it, isn't it?
There's three variances for like entire property.
The drive-through, you're talking the?
No. You mentioned the freestanding monument signs going from one sign to two.
Yes, we do.
There's also the total square footage of all signs and square footage of single sign.
Right, that is, that number one would be contingent on the approval of the others. So it's not really like a separate one, but yeah.
Are you in the monument signs?
It's more of like the, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, I think I understand the monument signs, okay. All right, now, the ones that we're, we've been talking a lot about are the two wall-mounted signs. Can you give us a sense of the square footage now and the square footage that you're asking for? Please.
Um, yes, all right, let's, I gave you two options on the heights. So I went in with the wanting, the logo to be 30 inches with the 21-inch letters for Rite Aid. And then I gave you another one that I believe was 24-inch, 30-inch logo and. Oh, you're going to, you've got them there, okay. But those...
30-inch logo and 21-inch one... And 21-inch, that's what you're asking for? Is that correct? What's, the other option is...
We saw that the...
The other is 20, and let me make sure I understand this. The other one is 24 inches by 19 and 3/4-inch logo?
This is the official request with 30 inches. And next is a supplement, so you can see what it would look like if you approved a smaller sign.
Okay.
So this is the actual request.
Gotcha. All right.
This is what's there.
Is the smaller what's there?
No, no. This one and this one are there today.
Okay. I'm sorry.
This is the second one.
Gotcha. All right. I'm with you. All right. Okay. You guys got pictures of these?
Oh, I think so. Yeah.
For color. That's all they want to change.
Okay. All right.
Get a question?
No.
Okay.
Feel bad for them.
Okay. All right. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Now, let's do, 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 do. My understanding is... We need, Madam Secretary, we need a motion to continue for... For what reason?
We are waiting for a response from Dutchess County Planning.
Okay. So we're waiting for a response from the Dutchess County Planning. I think you've answered all our questions. Does anybody have any other questions? Do we understand what they're asking for?
We're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Moss, are any questions? We have, we have no public counsel?
No, I have no questions.
No? Secretary?
No comment.
Okay.
Motion to extend the...
Motion to continue the public...
Continue.
Go ahead.
To February 23rd.
Is there a second? Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Good. Very helpful tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I have a better understanding of what I'm...
But I believe the overall square footage of the existing monuments is actually larger than either of the ones we're going in for. It's marked there as like 33, 34, but the overall, you know, you pay the overall height and the width, it's actually larger, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. Now, we have one more. Okay. Okay. Our final...
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna do that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And we have Key Construction?
They are not appearing to...
We're not here and we are...
Open the public hearing.
No, 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 no. I don't think so.
We need to, we need to open it and then adjourn it to the next meeting.
We're gonna open and then continue it?
Yes.
I have, I need a motion to open a, open the hearing for Key Construction. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I need, since there is nobody here for, from Key Construction, I need a motion to continue the public hearing?
Continue the public hearing to February 23rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carried. Okay. So, our last item on them is do, 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 do.
I think we got it. I think we got it.
Now, Speedway.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for your patience. We didn't put you last for a reason?
Oh, you always put the best for last. Right? I'm from Indiana, so I'm half good, right?
Ah. Where in Indiana?
South Bend area.
Oh, yeah.
Northwest Indiana.
Yeah. Well, I think our council knows where South Bend, Indiana is. And I do too. Very good territory. Very good.
Is this mic on or do you need to use this one?
You can use either one.
Okay.
Yes.
Just talk loud, please.
Sure. I'll try, yeah.
We have...
Close to the microphone.
I think they work better when we get close.
Okay. Yeah, if you have, you would take that and, oh, I have too many papers here. We don't, we don't need... Is this public hearing?
We will be setting the public hearing tonight together.
Okay. All right. Welcome, sir. And we, can you explain to us your application for variance?
Yes, sir. I will, I'll attempt to. What Speedway is requesting you do is change the pump pricers. The pricers that are on top of the pump, they're currently now, they're static manual change to electronic message center type change, like a reader board type functionality. Code doesn't necessarily allow that for that particular aspect because with the rate of change that we're proposing and the words that would appear on that text screen area aren't necessarily allowed to be illuminated. So what, I do have a video to show you what that intermittent change is, really does look like with the use in updated technology. It's not, it doesn't flash, it doesn't scroll, it doesn't blink, it doesn't do the things that most ordinances were written to prohibit. And, which is a good thing. It's just, it's an instantaneous change. It's a fade-in, fade-out. It's for the regular price and then if you were a club price. And it's only intended on the pumps. So what we're proposing to do, and the way the pumps are oriented there, that price isn't going to be seen from the road. It's not intended to be that. It's a point of purchase for the customer that goes and fuels their vehicle. So that's the intent of it. It's just strictly for those individuals so they have an understanding of the savings. Due to price changes, they happen daily to, a couple times a day to whatever since oil prices are going up and down.
Does it change while you're pumping?
Well, it, you know, that's a great question. I think it, it would go in between, it's the seven, four to seven second rate of change is what they're proposing. That can be, but that can be discussed because that can be accommodated. So it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to happen that often. It's, it's more intent to get, right? It is, it'd be more intent to get people to do the savings card and apply for that. So, and then they're loyal customers.
That's what you're trying to encourage.
Well, it, well, it's also a cost savings for the customer.
So if I look at this, if I go to another gas station and look, they have posted paper what the, what the cost is today of all three brands plus what I pay for if I pay cash.
Yes. You have it, there's a couple of gas stations down here. Stewart's has this kind, the technology that's just right down the road from us. They also have this, but theirs isn't flash. I don't think, those, I didn't see them change when I was there.
This is only the pricing. It doesn't have the digital message above the changes. And the pricing is allowed to be digital. That's not what's being contested.
Okay. So it's the message across?
Yeah.
It's the changing message across that really what we're looking for? Okay.
And I, if you, I would be happy to show you on my phone. I, I sent it, it's pixelated.
We have seen some pictures of it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to if you came over.
May I approach?
I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Just leave that mask on.
What's that?
Just leave that mask on.
Right. Okay. Set upside down? Set, no, that's...
Oh, it's your word.
The top. See?
With purchase or without purchase?
Without purchase. If I rotate it, it'll...
Oh, oh, that's not good. Try it again.
Okay, start.
Please, sorry. And where's the...
So we all gotta turn our heads sideways.
Where's the word?
This one is also in Upstate New York.
So are we talking about this that's in white? White is flashing?
It just changes. If you notice, it doesn't, it doesn't really, the rate of change is instantaneous. So that's the intent. So it's not, it isn't the flashing, scrolling, blatant, rotating.
Do you have to listen to music when you're pumping gas?
You do that every round.
It seems to be the case, yeah. I don't think, no, this one in particular isn't. I'll show you. I'm sorry.
A lot of times they have these separate screens.
Those are annoying.
It's loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, terrible.
It's just the text at the top. The price and the price that's...
So, Ms. Moss, the requirement is, we are not allowed to put a changing message above those signs. Is that...
Yeah. Well, internally lit is prohibited.
Yep.
So the digital components, the little lights that come on and go off or however it changes, that's an internally lit light.
Okay.
All, all of them together.
Right.
Right? So that's prohibited.
Okay.
Can't have that, except for the prices of the gasoline.
Which is constant until they change it one time, but it's not changing all the time.
While you're pumping gas.
Okay. No.
That's not...
No. All right. Okay. I think I understand, I think we understand what you're asking for. Now, let me say this. We, we have reviewed your application and we have to make the judgment, as you may know, on four variables. Is there no reasonable, no reasonable return if this happens? Are these unique circumstances? Is it self-created hardship and an alteration to essential neighborhood character? I will say this, that the application that we have reviewed does not speak strongly to those four. And our advice would be, not our counsel, but our advice would be that you look at those and if you would come back, look at those and modify your application. Because at this point, if your application stands as now, it may not, it may not meet those requirements.
Understood.
And so I would, I would give you that advice. And in that sense, would we continue to next month?
So if you would like, you can motion for me to forward this application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development because it's a longer dime.
I would like to, yeah. I, a, a motion to forward that to the county planning? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, do we need to continue this?
We need to set the public hearing, yes.
Okay. I need a motion to continue this public hearing?
To set the public hearing.
Set the public.
I'm set, oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
I need a motion to set the public hearing for February 23rd.
Motion to set the public hearing for February 23rd.
2022.
2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So if you come back with a, I think a modified application, and we're sending this already to the county planning, so we'll get, will we get feedback from them by that time?
Should we, should they wait, should I wait to forward it until we receive the additional information?
Yeah. It, it, I guess the question is if, if you're going to decide to modify it, that's one, that's one, one, one decision. Second, if you're gonna modify it and getting it in in time, if they are gonna modify it, what time do they need to get it into you so we can...
So I can just submit it now as is, and then when the new information comes in, I can just add that?
But that will need to get in. I'm thinking of timing now for it to come to the planning board and then come back to us in time for February.
It needs 30 days.
Yeah. Would, is March be better?
All right. Okay. So it would come back to us in March, assuming that you make those modifications, then we forward that to the planning. And then they come back to us sometime in February so we can, we can then go into March.